...thirteenth. Invite you to enjoy it in the meeting for the pledge.
Pledgees to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. In keeping with our new agenda format, I will invite anyone who's here for public comment to do that now before we begin public comment. Just a quick reminder before you start.
Bring in the chair.
Before you start, Stan, just a quick reminder for everyone that public comment is not intended to be a dialogue between the public and the board. Rather, it's just an opportunity for citizens to express their opinions, and if you would please try and do that in a five-minute window, that would be appreciated. If you could please start by introducing yourself and stating where you live and sign the sign-in sheet so we have your information, that would be great. Thank you. Mr. Lindberg.
Stan Lindberg, 43 Stone Creek Road. Adam Chair, I just wanted to comment again about the opportunity to be able to speak at the end of your meetings when we would be more able to respond to those things which have gone on in the meeting. At this point, it's difficult to say what might come up during your meeting that would be worthy of comment, and if I save my comments for the next meeting from this meeting, it sort of loses its impact and people will probably completely disregard it. So I would just, again, respectfully suggest that you give it some consideration as you think about your agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. How's it going today?
Hi. Your name and address, please.
My name is Samuel O. Campania. I live over here in 37 Gross Manor Avenue, right behind Lawrence Municipal Airport. I'm here on behalf of my colleague over here, USWO-12, from the lockout that is going on with the national grid. And actually, we're here trying to make a petition about, it's a small section on Box for Street that we actually take care of it. So what we're trying to do is at least try to nullify the work, you know, regular work to go in there because most of the workers that they're using right now are not really fully qualified to do it, but we can at least to make an exception that any guy has emergency that the customer is still need in just in case, you know, outage or a leakage or anything like that to be able to repair. So I would like just to, for, you know, the recommendation, you know, you can take it and maybe, you know, we can have a talk afterwards and we can give you a little more details of what's going on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Karen Laurel from...
I'm sorry. I'm sure my folks have before they speak decided to log that's there just to make sure that's on to the record. It just helps us when we're trying to do minutes afterwards.
Thank you, yes.
Sorry to interrupt.
Okay, I've got it signed in here.
Thank you.
I have spent a lot of time visiting you guys since last October concerning the Mass Ave. 125 program. And so we kind of got our results, we got our offers, and we were very concerned that terrible things were going to happen, and indeed, they did. But they devastated my home and myself and my neighbors. But they also threw you guys under the bus by stating that right in the offer that this is being done per your, to serve North Andover. I forget the exact phrase. There's a legal phrase there. But so in speaking to attorneys, they said that North Andover, because of, the view of North Andover is the state is sovereign, so they don't even inform them of the policies of North Andover. And therefore, the state says, "That's okay." In my particular case, they took even more property, and my setback is now 6.7 feet from a highway. Okay? They said, "Oh, my gosh, North Andover said, 'There's no problem with this.'" Therefore, we're going to say, they said upfront, and we were all upset about it, Phil, you were in the meeting where this was initially stated, that the state doesn't pay for damages to the remaining property, even though it's required by the Constitution. And in the offer form, they state there is a section that says, "What are the damages to the remaining property?" And they say, "None," because North Andover didn't tell them that a 6.7-foot setback is not acceptable when the planning committee is not allowed to wave under 25 feet. But so the attorney said, "I'm going to have to sue to get the reasonable amount, and the primary one should be North Andover." In, I've gone through all this, and you don't want to sue via eminent domain. You have, because in that particular case, it's extremely costly, and you, as far as attorney hours, and you're not allowed to get any of that money returned back to you, no matter how serious the offense. So you have to go and say, "It's a constitutional, you know, it's a constitutional, it's a, I'm sorry, it's a violation of a constitutional right." And there are three of them, and they have done it to everyone where there was a loss of property. So I, we were working as a group, and so I know what the offers are and how it was signed. And indeed, they said they wouldn't pay any, and they paid zero to all of us, even though 75% of the properties were affected. So my attorney says, "Got to go to North Andover first." And I've already talked to Susan. She says, you know, the, when you sue the government, the approach is they drag it out to make sure they break you financially, and then, you know, then they don't have to pay out. So in this particular case, we already know there's been criminal activity within this program, and there's likely to be more over the next couple of years as it plays out. And you'll probably want to talk to Susan, because my understanding is that public officials are not individually held liable for their decisions and actions as a public official until a crime has been committed. And they don't even have to be actively involved in the crime commission for them to become responsible as individuals. So I'm encouraging, I have another pass right now, we all do. It's roughly in a month we have to get our materials together. And what I'm asking is, this time around, North Andover say, "Document the trees that are taken off my property." Okay? They've, in the plan, and I'm working with the Conservation Department on the trees that are on conservation land, they have refused to document the trees. They say all the trees are on town property, and therefore, they're not paying for them. Okay? And they're saying there's no zoning violations, even though there are two very severe zoning violations. Therefore, they're not going to compensate for that. Mr. Mailer, you pushed back and said, "You have to have Jersey barriers in that follow-up meeting on my property like there is on all the remaining." The problem is with a 6.7-foot setback and a 4.5-foot easement, there is no room to put a Jersey barrier between the edge of the easement and my foundation. And therefore, on 595 Mass Ave. and 591 Mass Ave., those were the two where the easements were so close to the house that they couldn't put Jersey barriers, but they have them all along the entire rest of the program. There, okay, although you requested it at a meeting, it wasn't put in writing, so it wasn't seen as something they had to comply to. So now I have to live in fear of my grandchildren. They're basically working heavy construction equipment, working inches away from my grandchildren's playroom. They, and this is also where my dogs go all the time. So, you know, my grandson, he's five years old, he loves construction equipment. It's going to be so hard to keep him out of the playroom while they're working there, and I think it's too dangerous for him to be there. And when the appraiser, my appraiser, came there, they immediately said, "Working that close, they're going to cause structural damage. They're going to knock that portion of the house right off of its, it's on pillars," because the playroom is the original porch entrance to the home, but it's on, it's got these big brick pillars, and if a piece of equipment, because they're used to having Jersey barriers defining the area in which they can work, they're going to be working up so close, there won't be any Jersey barriers. Even if they put Jersey barriers there, if they nudge it even an inch, and that happens all the time, because I was told by the surveyors that easement areas are soft and squishy because, you know, they get pushed. If they need more room to get to the utilities, they push them.
Mrs. Laurel, sorry. May I just let you know you've had more than five minutes if you could try and wrap up your comments? I'd be appreciative.
Okay. What I'm asking for, and right now, is there are four major areas, I've shared them with you. I'm asking the committee to respond to what they want, since this is being done in the name of North Andover. What does North Andover want and expect?
Thank you. We will take your comments under advisement. Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else here for public comment? No? Okay. If not, we can move to the next item. I think we have a new staff member.
I just want to just comment more. From what you've described, it's absolutely dreadful. And I don't think anybody in this room would like happening to you, happening to them. And I am disappointed if they are using our name in basically saying, "Hey, what it is is what it is," and...
They're saying...
Well, wait. We have later in our agenda to talk about the approving of the easements for the project, so maybe we can have discussion around that, those comments during that point in our agenda, if you don't mind.
Is that today?
Yes, that's later in the agenda. Thank you.
So I'll...
Thank you. Okay, we have a new staff member to enter.
Nabil.
Hi.
My name is Nabil Daher, and the new electrical inspector down North Andover. Very excited to be a part of this town, and thanks for inviting me to this meeting.
Welcome. Where do you come from? What was your previous employment and...
Well, I'm self-employed. I own my own electrical contracting company.
Great.
I'm out of Methuen.
Methuen. Great. Well, welcome.
Thank you.
How nice of you to dress up so nicely as an electrical inspector. We don't ex...
Paul, anyone, you're going to dress up now.
There you go. Did he tell you to do that?
Thank you, Nabil. Welcome. The next item is approval of minutes from our July 16 meeting in our packet.
I'm trying to approve the minutes from July 16. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have acceptance of donations. We have a donation from Wheel Abraider in the amount of $10,000 to be used to pay for the agency fees for TIP, the trauma intervention program services. I don't know if we have someone from Wheel Abraider here.
Typically, they are not here. They've been sponsoring this program for quite a while. That helps the police and firefighters and residents, quite frankly, after, you know, traumatic events. Police chief and fire chief endorsed the acceptance of this donation. We've been talking about different ways to accommodate this kind of service in the future, and we're, we'll be spending the next 12 months working with Wheel Abraider and TIP to try to find whether or not this program, as currently constituted, is how they want to proceed, but this year, we are going to proceed in this direction.
Yes, it's my understanding, because I've had, as Tommy Antrus said, I thought perhaps we could use it in different ways, but my understanding is that with the accident on the lake, they were extremely helpful, and to their credit, I guess we should say thank you to Wheel Abraider and to TIP, but they had people there that were helping the victims a great deal in ways that not all of our staff could perhaps help them. Language barriers and so forth. So I've not always been thrilled about this program, but hey, credit is given where it is due, and I understand they did a great job.
I have a motion.
Motion, acceptance of the donation of $10,000, and that a thank you be sent to Wheel Abraider, assuming that this is accepted.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you to Wheel Abraider. The next item is a donation from the McDonald Leeds family. Sorry if I'm mispronouncing that, in the amount of $2,000 to be used for equipment at the youth center. Do we have anyone from the family?
This was part of the grand reopening of McDonald's along Osgood Street. For those of you who had an opportunity to attend, it was great. The building looks fantastic. I think it's, everybody was happy with the upgrades, and as part of the grand reopening, Leeds family agreed to donate and made two donations, one was to the youth center, so we certainly recommend that be accepted.
I'm trying to make a motion that we accept the donation from the Leeds family in the amount of $2,000 to be used for equipment at the youth center.
Second.
Yeah, this is wonderful. Does anyone have any idea of what we might be using that money to get at the youth center? I'd just be curious if anyone knows.
Just generally for programs.
Yeah, wonderful. Great, well, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you very much to the Leeds family, McDonald Leeds family. All right. Motion to move into licensing?
Yeah, yeah, motion to move in...
I'm out, Chair. I'll make a motion to move into licensing.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Okay. So we're in licensing. So first on our agenda is an application for a delivery license from John Nagori, I believe is how I pronounce it, on behalf of Crossway Transit LLC. This is a property that's located at 30 Mass Ave., Suite 409. Is there anybody here who can speak to this or give us a little more perspective on it? Okay. Well, in our packet, and I think this was last time, was just one item that needed to be completed, I believe, which we now have, but we have full sign-off from police and fire and building inspector. Any questions from the group? This is to provide a, kind of a taxi and delivery service is kind of the upshot of it.
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah. No questions?
No other questions?
I think that we approve the request of Crossway Transit LLC for a liquor license at 30 Mass Ave. 125.
Okay, I've got a motion to have a second.
I'll second that.
Any discussion, any other questions, concerns? Okay. Then, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous approval. All right, our second item is, let's see, for St. Gregory's Armenian Church requests a one-day wine and malt license for their picnic on September 9. September's only a few weeks away, hard to believe. From noon to 5:30, and they're requesting a waiver of the fee. Is there anybody from St. Gregory's here to address this? This is an annual event. We have full sign-offs. Any questions, any concerns for the committee?
No. I guess they asked to waive the fee because it's a charitable organization and they raise money for their church, so that's why they request for the waiver of a fee on this one.
Okay, I appreciate the clarification, and that's typical, I think, I've seen in the past for us as a community do.
Yeah.
Good. That's right. Do I hear a motion?
I may have approval.
Aye.
Okay. Any further discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Records show unanimous support on that. Our next, this is a little new to me, so I'm, a little explanation would help me to understand a little bit more, but we have an application for a change of manager at the Stevens Estate at Osgood Hill from Gail Lull to Victoria Otis. So could you help me understand this a little bit?
Just like, even though the Stevens Estate function facility operates similar to other liquor license holders, even though it is a municipality, still operates in the same fashion, Gail is doing less work in that regard, and eventually will move toward retirement, so this is changing that manager. So every establishment with a liquor license requires there to be a designated manager, whether it was the 99 or Bertucci's or the Stevens Estate. So in this particular case, we have a change in manager because the person who is the manager won't be serving in that role. So this just changes the person.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, see all the paperwork, you know, all right, see the experience, the background, just trying to understand where that came from, so I appreciate that.
Manager ends up being the point of contact if the board is licensing authority, ends up in a disciplinary merit traditionally. You typically would contact not only the corporate folks, but the manager who's ultimately responsible for that license. That's why it's relevant.
And this has nothing to do with Joanna and her...
No, Joanna originally could not be manager because she was not a U.S. citizen at the time of appointment.
Oh, she is now, yeah.
Liquor licenses are required to be held by a U.S. citizen. So at the time of her original appointment, she had not yet become a citizen, and therefore, she originally could not have been on the license.
Interesting.
I appreciate that, because when I first saw it, I was like, stop for a second. What happened to Joanna? So...
So we just, it heads up to the licensing board, although it doesn't happen often. You should always look for the question, which says, "Is the person requesting the license a U.S. citizen?" If that's checked, no. It won't matter what the rest of the application says, because it would be denied by the ABCC, even if it was approved by this board.
Interesting. Well, thank you. Thank you for the clarification. So we have full information, resume?
I only have approval.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I don't pay attention to that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, unanimous. All right, that's something we have seen fairly regularly. I think that's fair to say. So Mary McCollege requests a one-day wine and malt liquor license for a reception at the stadium pavilion, which now they do have a pavilion at that stadium, it's wonderful, on August 30th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And again, looking at our packet, as usual, they have all the proper sign-offs from the fire, police, and building. Any questions? Any discussion? Do I have a motion?
I may have approval. A second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Okay, our next one. Again, we've seen this fairly frequently. This is for butlers and bars, request a one-day liquor licenses for events at the tent at Smolak Farms. The first being a all liquor license for a wedding on August 18th from 4:00 to 10:00 p.m., a alcohol license for a wedding on September 2nd from 4:00 to 9:00 p.m., an alcohol license for a corporate picnic on September 9th from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., an alcohol license for a wedding on September 15th from 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., a wine and malt license for a corporate dinner on September 20th from 4:00 to 9:00, and an alcohol license for a wedding on September 22nd from 4:00 to 10:00. Wow. That's a lot. We have full information in the packet. Any discussion around this?
I just want to validate the dates. I mean, they have, 10 o'clock is, I believe, Friday and Saturday night, they can stay open till 10 on Sunday night. So I'm assuming, unless it's a holiday weekend, so I'm assuming these are all either a Friday or Saturday night that they're going till 10 o'clock.
September 2nd.
Yes.
That's the night before Labor Day, February, and they are, on Sundays, they're not allowed to go.
Sunday to 22nd, both Saturdays.
Yes.
Yeah.
So they are allowed on the 2nd because it's the day before holidays, so that's a, that was one that was logged. So, okay, so they're all in good shape then.
Okay, good. Well, thank you, I appreciate that, Paul, staying top of it. And it seems everything has been, we've had no follow-up issues with Smolak Farms in terms of sound at this point, so... That's right.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the request from Smolak Farm for one-day all alcohol and wine and malt licenses as requested.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. All right, we're almost there. Last thing is, just, you know, in looking at this, this is my first time citizen, being this chair and this responsibility, and we spent some time last year, and I want to give, again, tip of the hat to the former chair of the licensing committee here to kind of look at our rules and so forth, but we didn't visit fees, and we, I think that's appropriate to do when, you know, on some sort of a regular basis. And part of what's kind of prompted this is, we had a kind of a new category recently with the Wine Lab, which, by the way, seems to be doing very well. We always look at our fees, and I don't think we've kind of reviewed the fee schedule. Does it feel right? Should we have a discussion around it? And the one thing I would throw into that is, we've had sometimes rush requests, and is that something that we should take some consideration in, in terms of what that puts on the staff here at Town Hall, and to try and make sure that there's a recognition that, you know, rushes are, well, it's like, if you want it there in three days, you put a stamp on it. If you want it tomorrow, it's, you know, it's $12, and if you want it tomorrow morning, it's 25. That's the way the world sort of works, and I don't know if we should have that discussion here. So I open up the floor to our fee schedule.
So you want to talk about the entire fee schedule, or...
Yeah, just the fee schedule, but the one part in particular that sort of prompted me was kind of the rush, too, so kind of put that all into the pot. It's just kind of a general discussion. I don't see us necessarily...
So, yeah, I mean, but on the agenda, it just says, "Discussion regarding fees for one-day liquor licenses." So, but you're saying you want to have a general discussion on all fees?
Well, we're kind of in that realm, if that's okay with the Chair.
You're the Chair?
All right, well, here's your, okay.
I mean, do we have input regarding what other towns charge, just as a comparative? Because when we set the farm series pouring request, we looked at what other towns charged for a similar license, just to see if we're out of whack. I mean, I can see that that's reasonable to do on a regular basis. Do we have that information?
So that's something that we, I think, will get. I don't have that.
But we're also not supposed to charge a fee for more than what it costs to deliver the service.
Absolutely.
So some of these are somewhat pricey, you know, $2,000, I guess, $3,000, just something to bear in mind. to bear in mind. I don't, I don't object to taking a look at it.
Okay.
But...
Well, I guess, how would we quantify whether or not we are charging more than to deliver a service? Because what we're talking about, for a restaurant, all-alcohol license for $3,000, that includes, you know, that's a full year, that's a yearly fee, which means, you know, that's, you know, we've got police, fire, those folks are involved in those situations in some of these places. So how do we quantify then, if we're charging more than what the services are that are supported?
I think that's a, that's a very good question, but I guess that's partly our role. And I believe we can, because you, like you said, you figure out the amount of hours that go into it, what it costs to deliver that service, including, you know, benefits and all kinds of stuff go into that, but it's just something to keep in mind.
My, I think I misunderstood, well, I guess, as I understood the way the agenda was written. The presentation of an idea of expedited processing fees for one-day liquor license requests that are not submitted by the stated deadline have at least 30 days prior to the event. I mean, I go on the record by saying I'd like to hear from colleagues and have an actual discussion where we post on the agenda to talk about fees in general and the impact they have on the businesses that pay them, and also see a comparison of how we, how we stack up to other communities, whether they charge certain fees. I'd also like to know, like, for me, I'd like to have a better understanding of what goes into certain, like, when a mobile food truck applies for a license, what are the steps that that mobile food truck actually has to jump through, or that applicant has to jump through? And how does that differ or compare to, like, a fortune teller, for example? I mean, we don't charge a fee right now for mobile food truck services, we charge a $50 fee for fortune teller's services. I would assume that the mobile food truck has some type of review regularly perhaps of the health department, and so there would be work associated with that that I would think is more labor-intensive and time-consuming than a fortune teller would require. I just think that it would be, I'd love to have this conversation, and I'd love to proactively solicit then more feedback if we're going to have this broader discussion. And I think it's actually, I'm glad that you, I'm glad you identified this and that you, you're starting this conversation, because I think that a lot of businesses accept the fee but don't necessarily reflect on, you know, they just accept the cost and they bear it, but don't necessarily reflect on just what are they getting for, for paying such a fee, so.
Transparency and...
And I would ask, if possible, could we have a breakdown of what each of these fees, how much is generated annually by each of these fees?
And what the services, estimated services are for, like, for instance, in all-alcohol, restaurant with all-alcohol, what's the estimated service cost for that? And also...
Well, that would be the fee, technically.
Well, $3,000, right? But I think what Rosemary, what Rosemary is asking is, what supports that $3,000 fee?
Yeah.
What's the services that are being offset by that $3,000 fee?
So if I can make a, so, one, it clearly doesn't sound like you have enough information, so that's a good place to begin. So let me recommend that we go off and do a comparative study of other fees, and then probably, rather than going down the list and doing this sort of value of each permit, because it's not subjective, but it certainly can vary. For instance, if you weighed into all of that, maybe some groups have discipline hearings, we don't charge them because they're arriving here and a discipline's factored into the police and the fire and your actions. But I think if we look at that comparative list, and you decide from that comparative list that there are some outliers, either way, that would be a good jumping-off point to the question of whether fees should change, to some fee that's too high or too low compared to everybody else. And then do a deeper dive on those ones that you identify as being the outliers. If they're sitting right in the core of what everybody else does, and there's a general understanding in the industry that this is about what it costs, but I think we can then focus, the board could focus and say, these are the ones we want to look further into. We can provide that detail, but I think the first step would be to give you a comparison of 10-ish, eight to 10 communities and what they charge as fees, and as part of that, Mr. Colagero certainly provide you an idea of how much we collect in aggregate. Yeah, so how many businesses of each side total, pretty easily.
Not to add, or if there's a link that, I mean, I don't mind doing it myself or having on the agenda, but comparing maybe the past several years, because...
In terms of revenue collected?
Yeah, so, I mean, over the last three fiscal years, you know, maybe there's a spike, there was a spike one year, and, you know, Merrimack College wasn't asking for...
Yeah, we'll provide you the data. I think you're going to find that it's fairly, it's fairly level, that we haven't seen a significant change from one year to the next. We do get, you know, your agendas are fairly crowded with one-day liquor licenses, but in total at $100. It takes a whole bunch of $100 to really make a sea-change of things, but we certainly can give you an idea of, we'll give you a three-year history of the total, pretty easy, pretty easy stuff, and then a comparison to some series of communities so that you can get an idea of that. Can I speak specifically to the item on the agenda?
Yeah.
I think one of the challenges is that we have a number of different folks who work on licensing. So the clerk's office is sort of the gateway or entry point. Our office, in terms of Laurie's involvement, Laurie Berzleff's involvement in further evaluating that, finding some inconsistencies, if there happen to be some, of which, you're filling out fairly complex applications, sometimes without attorneys, there's some errors. And then with that, also comparing that to the statute, which first happens through Ms. Berzleff, and sometimes that includes town council. So when these applications are received within a shorter time period, all of a sudden, there's a cost associated with, I've charged Ms. Berzleff with focusing on this, and all of a sudden, the person is saying, I have five days to get this done, and all of a sudden, that priority gets shifted over here. So there's an opportunity cost associated with prioritizing, which would be a fairly simple approval, because the applicant has decided, to your very helpful analogy, has decided that they need it tomorrow, when we may have other priorities as well. There's an absolute cost to that, because we're picking and choosing items. So specifically to the window, whether it's 30 days or not, it is far more difficult and challenging and taxing on the staff when someone comes in with something last minute. And again, you guys can decide what last minute means, 30 days, or 25 days, or 20 days, or 10 days. There is more of an effort, and we don't mind the service part, but it means something else is being set aside. And if it happens on occasion, that's great. If it happens on some regularity, it becomes more of a challenge. And I'll give you one final one within that. Typically, the licensing chair has been asked to do the unusual, and found themselves in cases where someone says, I have an event this weekend, and if you don't sign this right now, Mr. Chair, I'm not going to have my great wedding or my great event. That's a little unfair to the board, and so if there was more understanding, by understanding the cost to the town for doing that, meaning a higher fee, I think it's both supportable, as long as it's not unreasonable, and it probably would set the tone in terms of making sure people file on a, on a timely basis. But if it happens between meetings, it throws our world upside down. You folks are asking information, we're discarding valuable projects in the middle of trying to get that done. So I would certainly say if there was a big, an increased fee, it would be in a case where a request came in between selectmen's meetings, because that, that really changes the dynamic.
The only thing I can think of that, that would be a reasonable increase in the fee is that if we had someone from our inspectional services who had to do it after hours, so to speak, or above and beyond, I think that would justify that if we were paying them, like, they come in on a Saturday or something like that.
That's not really what I'm focused on. I'm talking about particularly liquor license fees, where someone, the meeting on the segment tonight, what night are we on, the 13th?
Right.
And someone says, instead of providing the notice, which is required, 30 days, they show up next Monday and say, hey, by the way, I need a license on your agenda for the following week. There is an absolute cost associated with telling the three or four staff involved in this, including the review by the police department, DPW, and others. Hey, by the way, stop what you're doing, because this becomes a priority.
Yeah, but that's kind of what I'm speaking to, if our staff has to...
Well, it wouldn't be overtime, it would be prioritizing time. So it's items, so either that staff member would have to say, sorry, this liquor license isn't a priority, in which case the person doesn't have the event, and none of us have wanted to say that?
No.
Which is a good thing, or recognizing that there is a cost, to Mr. Nobley's point about how fast you want to get it there, there is a cost for that expedited process.
It's like when you go and get your, you need to get a passport in short, short window, which they have charged you for that because they have expedited it.
I agree, I think we're still talking about the same thing.
But it wouldn't be overtime, it wouldn't be a process of...
I have a question about the application fee. Where is the application fee applied? So I see a $100 application fee. Is that a yearly fee that's added on top of the licensing fee, or is that also...
On a one-day?
Well, on anything, yeah, but is that charged on a one-day? So if someone comes in for a one-day all-alcohol license, which we charge $100 for?
Yes.
We also charge $100 for application fee for that as well?
No, it's $100.
So what's the application fee?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have that specifically in front of me. On the master list?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's the very first fee. It's the alcoholic beverages, town fee, application fee, $100.
Yeah, that's maybe just the application fee, and then when they get accepted, that's when the other fee comes in, is that? I'm throwing that up.
Joyce, can you speak to that? I'm sorry to... Hey, it's Joyce.
The application fee, which is commonly used for most cities and towns, is a cost of our processing. So say if you're applying for a change of manager, that has to come through the local licensing commission, and it also requires a significant amount of time to make sure that the ABCC application is properly done. So most cities and towns will charge that as an application fee, but it's not done for the one-days, because the one-day fees are statutorily set at 175, and so you wouldn't, you know, the cost of that is there. But it's very common for especially ABCC change of manager or anything like that, that has to require a significant amount of paperwork. The paperwork you get, the Form 43, has to be very carefully reviewed, Suzanne reviews that. Takes a long time to make sure the newspaper publications, if required, or whatever. So that's what the application fees are used for.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Like, I guess the, and that's, I think, a good approach for us to kind of look at this a little more depth. The other, the other component of kind of the services is, this isn't just at that one time, because there's a, there's a monitoring component to these also, right? So whether it's for the day or for the year, it's not just the act of doing that paperwork and stamping it, but literally, they're responsible. And I guess I look at the, sort of the way, when I was on the school committee, we looked at athletic fees, and you said, well, we don't charge it by sport, but clearly it costs more to put somebody in ice than it is to put them on a track, but yet we came up with sort of a middle ground that seemed to make sense, rather than trying to charge specifically because it kind of made sense from a processing standpoint and worked out. So I do think that seems to be a little bit of what we have here, and I would be surprised if that isn't sort of what you come back with too, which is sort of overall, this is what it takes to administer this band of licensing with the town.
Well, we also do have the police that do, they do spot checks of these establishments. So, something else that goes into it that isn't just the one-time fee, there's, that goes along with it.
We have to date our police, that, right?
Yeah.
Absolutely. So I appreciate that. So we'll leave it, though you're going to do some research.
Yes.
And, second, to Colagero, if you want to delve into that a little bit, kind of be the point man with that, that would be much appreciated. So I say, thanks for volunteering.
I felt like we were throwing the light at Tom Andrew, go get all of this information, which he's done a good job of making sure a lot of it is accessible online for the average person, so.
Thank you.
He'll have it all tomorrow. Wake up tomorrow morning, he'll be fingers crossed.
All right. So, do I hear a motion to close the meeting of the Licensing Commission?
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in all, yes.
Okay, so now we can move on to consent items. Our first item is to approve and sign easements for Mass DOT, Mass Ave, Chickering Road Intersection Project. And I believe we have Jim Stanford here to give us a brief overview of what we're being asked here.
He's freshly back from vacation, so feel to, you know, whatever you feel like you have to get off your chest, it's a very good time. Keep refreshed.
Did you enjoy the sun or just rain?
It was very hot, but it was very nice, very nice. Thank you. So this is relative to the Mass Ave Chickering Road Intersection Project that Mass DOT is initiating. It's, they're considered right-of-entry after speaking with town council. Essentially, they're easements. There are two, all, all three of them are easements, and there is no cost associated. We are agreeing, but in this instance, we're really not losing anything. What they're doing, the three locations, one being Phillips Brooks Road, right at the intersection to the school, the other off of 125, essentially the existing access into the school property, and Bay State Road, which is a paper street. They're doing some drainage improvements to help with the drainage flow. So there's really, we're not really losing anything, but they have, they do need these easements to do this right-of-entry work as part of the overall project. So an example would be, at the time, we did the project off of Green Street associated with the safe routes to school. In that particular case, we sometimes refer to them as construction easements. It's access to town property that they can do work on, and then they restore the property and they leave. So we're not giving property rights away in terms of permanent property rights, they're temporary property rights of this work who can be completed as part of the project.
So once the project's completed, the easement is rescinded?
Yep.
Is that correct? All right, understand.
Okay, could I hear a motion for the sake of our discussion?
And this is all, just to be clear, this is all-town property? This is not any individual, all-town property?
These are town properties, that's correct. You can only give easements to...
I know that, I just want to be clear about it.
I was doing that for the public.
One for the record.
But just for one more question, in some of the projects on Green Street, some of the changes did impact where people's driveways were and...
Well, that was private property, so it's analogy I used, but it wasn't completely fair, and that was private property. In this case, there's no change in the light of air access.
So there's none of that, because some people, their driveway now, they're, they almost look like they were on another street, you know, but they fixed it, and they did it.
No, these are really basic.
There's nothing like that.
These are basic. They are obtaining other right-of-entry's, as you've heard. I believe the church next door, similar, very similar, but, no, this is just drainage improvements. One of them's cleaning out a swale, so it's, it's really good stuff.
That sounds awful. That word sounds terrible.
Swale. Bleeding out a swale.
Okay, as long as, that's great.
So, so these are, the one off Phillips Brooks and Bay State are at the entrance of the school?
Right at the entrance, that's correct.
And exit?
Yep.
Okay.
So I move that Board of Selectmen approve and sign the easements for Mass DOT for Mass Ave, Chicking Road Intersection Project.
Second.
Any discussion? I should say I misspoke, I guess, I was thinking this would be relevant to Ms. Laura's comments, so as they're obviously not relevant to her public comments, we can take her comments into consideration and discuss those at another subsequent meeting, if it makes sense. But do we have any other discussion on these particular easements?
No, as long as it's...
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. All opposed? Any opposed?
No, 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 I, I wasn't...
Okay, good, motion passes then. Next item is the Department of Public Works request a surplus vehicles and equipment.
This is a standard request, and although Jim's here and can speak to it, this is a fairly perfunctory request, and you can see the attachment as to the equipment in question.
Do I hear a motion?
Move the Board of Selectmen approve the request of Jim Samper, DPW Director, to surplus the vehicles and equipment outlined in his memorandum dated August 8, 2018.
Second. Do we have any discussion?
Like, the backhoes, 18 years old, like, we've seen them before where they've come in at like 30 years old, 40 years old, this one just been used up beyond its useful, I mean, that's what you're saying, it would, it just seems like a backhoe like that would get a few more years' use out of it, or, I'm just curious about what the useful life of a backhoe is.
It has been within our CIP, and really, it's hours of use, and the type of use that it's, it's had. And our opinion is that it is past its useful life. And Jim, this will be a trade-in to a replacement? Everything is a one-for-one trade-in, with the exception of the roller, which is going to be combined with the other piece of equipment, so we already have an existing roller that roller that doesn't need to be replaced.
So, we have, for quite a period, have a one-for-one exchange on all rolling stock, now counting things like the roller, so that whether it's police or fire vehicles, everything we add, we take off a matching piece, whether it's trade-in or otherwise, so we don't expand our fleet, we don't increase our insurance cost?
It looks like, I mean, two, two Chevys are significantly older than one of the other ones. Is there, are we getting, it just happens if that one's, you know, reached its useful life four, four years earlier?
Exactly. It's just, again, the conditions, some of this, we have to look at what are the repairs we're putting into it just to keep it on the road? And I can tell you that these are in pretty rough shape.
Curiously, are we getting, like, I mean, is it when a transmission goes that we look at replacing a truck, for example, or like what?
Yeah.
I mean, what kind of stuff is making us decide? I mean, a lot of times, I feel like we haven't had discussion on these items because they're so old, it's like, easy to imagine that they're in horrible shape, but I guess just it's.
I would say the conversation typically takes place through the purchase side rather than disposal side. Meaning, we have a pretty active program through the capital improvement plan to make sure that we don't bump into a vehicle that we no longer have a choice, that we're forcing it into the shop and spending money. So, we proactively replace them while they still have some value left. Chevy's not a great example of that, but more often than not, we're changing vehicles before they're at the point at which we say, "Oh, no, what do we do?" And so, that's no, so normally, we have that conversation through the purchase side, meaning that you'll see in the capital plan, the purchase of certain rolling stock, and the assumption with that should be that there's another piece coming off that, that's replacing it. So, we do certainly do ongoing maintenance, but we're also trying to replace vehicles before they get close to that useful life, because once we're in that spot, we're in the middle of a fiscal year, didn't fund the replacement, paying for a repair. So, I'd rather change a vehicle two or three years early and get a return through a trade-in than wait for the vehicle to sort of be belly up and, and be stopped.
And they're going out to the shop that weekend to buy a new.
Yes, or it's limping along or taped or.
I guess I would say too, I mean, it's, I don't know, you'd look back, 2004 doesn't seem like a long time ago, and then it's like, wait a minute, that's 14 years ago, that's, that is a long time. And from somebody who just, you know, traded a vehicle, that was '04, and it was, the engine's running fine, but all these other things are gonna go at some point, and any one of those just wipes out any resale value. And that's sort of, that's sort of the danger with that age is, there's just, you're just one repair away, and there are multiples that are sort of circling that opportunity, so to speak. Is that, is that fair to say?
It is, and I would just add that you have to remember that a lot of these vehicles are being used during the winter. They're getting heavy use, they're not light-duty vehicles.
Yeah. Got it.
Okay, any more discussion? All right, I think we already had a motion, so in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thanks for the question.
Yes, thank you. Okay, next item on our agenda is to accept child passenger safety equipment grant from the Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety in the amount of $2,625.
We have some distinguished.
I see our chief here to perhaps comment. Thank you.
Firefighter Duchesne.
Nationwide traffic crashes are a leading cause of death for children of all ages. Properly installed car and booster seats have been proven to reduce the risk of death and injury in crashes. Yet, the American Automobile Association estimates that 75% of car seats are installed incorrectly. And as the chair said, that the North Andover Fire and Police Department have jointly been awarded a child passenger safety equipment grant. That was actually put together by joint effort of the Police and Fire Department. Tonight, we have the two that worked on it and attained the grant, Forrest, firefighter Jeff Duchesne, and Sergeant Katie Gurkey. They worked hard in putting this together, and I'd like them to come up, talk a little bit about what they expect to do with the grant and an event that they have coming up this weekend. So, if I could have them come up and talk a little bit about it.
Good evening, everybody. How are y'all tonight? Good. I'm not on the road, so that's a good thing. As long as they don't call me away, that's a good night in town. So, as the chief just mentioned, I've been doing the car seat program since 2006, and the only reason I got into doing it is because when I worked in Hingham, we had child passenger safety technicians there that were certified. It's a one-week program. And once upon a time, when I was in Hingham, there was a car accident where the infant carrier actually fell out of the vehicle while it was moving. And that was on a street like 114 in front of Staples would be right here, Route 3A in Hingham. But beyond miracle, the baby was fine, I was in it, because it was properly strapped in, the harness straps were nice and snug. So, that carrier functioned as basically a cocoon, a shell for the infant, just a little forehead bump, and that was it. So, since then, I don't have children, I have a fur child, he's got four legs and a tail, but I strongly believe in child passenger safety since that. This grant's gonna afford us the opportunity to not only educate the people in our communities from a police and fire standpoint, but also provide, whether it's a caretaker, parent, grandparent, with replacement car seats, no cost to the town, it's through this grant, if we have inspected a car seat to somebody who's got, let's just say, a car seat that expired 10 years ago. There's a lot of misinformation out there about, number one, the car seat laws that have changed drastically since I became certified in 2006. And there's also a lot of misinformation about what kind of car seats children should be using. So, in doing this car seat event, and Jeff can probably speak to it a little bit more, we're gonna be able to help inform parents, caretakers, grandparents, North Andover residents about what the current laws are, take a look at their seats, and inform them that seats do have an expiration date. And why is that? Well, I'm sure the car seat manufacturers want to make a lot of money and by having people buy new ones, but plastics decompose in the heats and over a period of time and fibers and material stress. So, there's a whole bunch of information that we're gonna be able to provide to the community. And if we run into a car seat where the child's outgrown it, or it's expired, or defective, important recall that could affect its safety, we'll be able to send that child home in a safe car seat that's brand-new to them, and like I said, no cost to the town because it's all obtained through a grant. So.
That's great.
And it's really nice, because I used to do it myself till Jeff became certified. When was that, two years ago?
Two years.
Two years ago. So, the more people and more agencies we have involved in the community, the better it's gonna be to inform the town about what the laws are, save us practices for children. So, that's all I got.
So, Saturday's event is going to be at Station 1, which is on 795 Chickering Road. The hours have been posted on social media here throughout town with the help of Chris McClure. It's on the North Andover Police Department Facebook page, also their social media pages. It's been posted on the town website, the North Andover Police Department website, as well as the North Andover Fire Department website. It is scheduled from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And if you have a child and you would like your car seat inspected, please feel free to stop by.
I think it's great, especially before school starts, there's changes of schedules for families.
So, I just want to finish by saying, this is another example of police and five members working together for the betterment of the community. I just, I wanted to recognize these two, because this is a truly important event and a grant that was received, so I just wanted to thank them both for working on that.
Really, thank you.
I think that's great. Can I ask a question, so, or maybe a suggestion, Mike? So, you're doing this event awesome, and I'm just thinking about how we kind of keep momentum with that. So, we have our preschool, and we're gonna have our new kindergarten opening, and, you know, is there a way maybe to get that information posted there? Because we're gonna have a lot of people coming to a new building. You may have a lot of parents engaging for the first time. It's an opportunity to kind of hit that population?
Right, that's a, that's an excellent point, which has been terrific. So, I've been basically doing it solo for a few years now, but now we have Officer Caffrey, Officer Wilson, and Jeff here now doing it. So, as a team and a partnership, we can be able to target the elementary schools and the ECC as far as doing even mini-checkup events for their parents. We've done, I've done it at daycares before, where at pickup time, we'll offer a side area to park and lock where that parent can come for, to have the car seat inspected, hand out literature. So, those things, with the more people we have involved, the more outreach we can do, especially with this event, we're working with technicians, other technicians from.
Andover.
And three, three officers from Andover are coming to help us, Topsfield firefighters.
Topsfield, two from Bloxville, one from Georgetown.
And Deckdunkers firefighter as well, and Lawrence General Hospital staff, so.
That's great.
Great.
Fantastic.
So, yes, we are trying to target as many of the, you know, local.
And if you're not able to attend the event on Saturday, you can always call either the Fire or Police Department, schedule an actual appointment, and then when we're on duty, we'll be happy to take a look at your seat.
Right, that's something we've been doing forever and a half, individual appointments for anybody who comes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
I'm sure the Board of Selectmen accept the grant from the Deputy Office of Public Safety. In the amount of $2,625.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
Awesome.
All right, next we have request of Joseph Contrada of St. Vincent de Paul Conference for a use of the town comment on Saturday, September 22nd, from 10:00 to noon for, for the Walk of the Poor. Do we have anyone here to, is Joseph here? No?
Madam Chair, I have done one final check of the online permitting process, and there was no conditions placed on by any of the departments, except that if they generate sufficient amount of trash, if they would remove their own trash rather than using our receptacles, that would be appreciated.
Okay.
But if they can, they could still use our receptacles, because we don't want.
We don't want them overflowing.
But we don't want one string.
No, no, of course.
Only if they have a significant amount of trash.
That's, yes.
So, this is the same, same day as the Fall Festival and the comment?
Right. Is it the same day?
I think in the past, they've done it the same day as the Fall Festival, and there hasn't been a problem.
Yeah, because one's walking around, the other one's in the middle.
I just want, I think it's.
Succinctly said.
Isn't that the 20th, isn't that the 22nd, Phil?
This is the 22nd it says.
Oh, it is.
This is 22.
We've done that in the past on the same day?
I know in the past, they had people present. They, I think they typically sync up.
True, actually.
And there's never been a problem before. So, like, I mean, again, there are already people down there.
Yeah.
I was just thinking about where we end up.
Actually, we have a few more people to the Fall Festival.
All works.
Yeah. Okay.
I believe that the Board of Selectmen approve the request of St. Vincent de Paul to use the town comment on Saturday, September 22nd, from 10:00 to 12:00 for the annual Walk for the Poor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next item is town manager appointment to the planning board, would you like to?
Sure, I'm recommending that the board endorse, I'm not sure what the right term is, this is always sort of an awkward moment. Endorse, support, otherwise move forward with the person, the individual that of Laurie Crane, who appointed to the planning board as the associate member through 2020. We provided you a copy of the application for a volunteer position.
And this is a full planning board decision?
No, it's the associate.
Associate.
Yep, associate member.
I'm sure I'll approve the appointment of Laurie Crane to, as an associate member of the planning board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. All right, the next item is to accept the Green Communities Grant from the Department of Energy Resources in the amount of $173,783.
So, Madam Chairman, as you, we first communicated back some time ago, but certainly as recently as February, the town is embarking on changing all of the streetlights to LED. The expectation is that there will be an annual cost savings of approximately $74,000 in operating costs. This stems from our decision several years ago to purchase the streetlights from National Grid, which did two things. One is it reduced our annual operating costs in terms of utility bills by $50,000 a year, for about $1 million over 20 years, and improved our ability to replace those lights on a more timely basis. That has worked well, we have an onboard contractor who does that work, and people are happy that replacing a streetlight when it goes out happens much quicker. But the natural byproduct of that is to change the LED, the cost further goes down, there's a reduced tariff, and the maintenance is less expensive. That entire project was estimated to cost $452,000, and a combination of a grant you approved several months ago for $100,000, rebate incentives from the utility, and this grant, that cost will, there will be no out-of-pocket cost to the town for that $400,000 project in the end. In the end, again, the anticipated annual savings from an operating perspective is $74,000 a year. So, I'd like to thank Jim Stanford and Laurie Berzleff, who worked on this grant. It's another example of why being a Green Community is a positive thing. We've received close to a half a million dollars in Green Communities grants since becoming a Green Community, which I think was two years ago, and will continue to have an opportunity to apply for similar grants for different energy-related initiatives each and every year. This is really good news.
Great.
Madam Chairman, the Board of Selectmen accept the grant from the Department of Energy Resources in the amount of $173,783.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion passes unanimously. Next item, sign the warrant for the 2018 state primary.
All right.
I didn't know we had to do this, but perhaps you can share at the public what you shared.
The county clerk is here to share.
Thank you.
It's just a requirement on the state law that you sign the warrant.
And then we have it posted by a constable no later than August 28th, so.
All right. And the election day, for everyone who doesn't know, is Tuesday, the 4th of September, the day after Labor Day. So.
Madam Chair, I'll move that the Board of Selectmen sign the warrant for the 2018 state primary on September 4th, 2018, from 7:00 a.m. D.P.M.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, next item is to approve the permit fees for town projects. So, this is stemming from our last meeting where we discussed the fact that we waive building permit fees for public projects, and in our discussion, we landed at, it would make sense to look at one comprehensive list so that we can see what we have planned for the coming year and waive them in one swoop, one fell swoop, which gives us kind of a better, broader view, overview of what we're doing, and also alleviates work having to be held up because of the timing of our meetings and whatnot.
So, as I had my communication to the board, it's been a good effort for us as well. It's allowed departments to reflect on what's happening over the next year and think about some of those things, spend some time on it. It's a pretty neat document to the public, it shows how much work we get done in one particular year. This is not a light lift in terms of the number of public projects that go on, on any particular year. It's a good sign that we're doing a lot of work here, and so I think it's helped everybody. I've spoken to the division heads and department heads who are impacted by this, specifically Steve Foster and Jim Stanford, who very much appreciate the opportunity to not have to sort of think about this on a one project at a time, but think about it near the beginning of a fiscal year.
It's, it's actually pretty impressive, you know, we kind of passed the CIP, and this is what the town's gonna build or repair, do whatever, but to actually see it in a list, in this form, is kind of another way to reinforce. Also, that way it touches schools, all types of facilities, that some of this is about maintenance or upgrading and that. I think it's, it's good for the citizens to see this because we sometimes get fixated on new buildings and new things, and they're wonderful, but it's about taking care of it too, and that's what I think comes out with this, so.
Yeah, and also it shows where we're spending our money.
Yeah, absolutely.
A lot is day-to-day, you don't see that, but these are something physical that you see. I think it's great.
Yeah, I think it definitely gets us more towards what we were, the outcome of our discussion last week was around transparency in our last meeting, and making sure we're being transparent, and I think this really gets to that, so I appreciate this.
It's the bill, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Is there anything right there in front of us? Perfect.
So, is.
I'll move the Board of Selectmen waive all fees associated with the projects found on this report submitted by our town manager.
Second. Any further discussion?
Thanks for prompting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion passes unanimously. Great. Moving on to appointments, we have got a very long list of appointments, so that's great.
Selectmen, Noble and I had a marathon session.
It looks like it.
Interviewing some great people that have stepping up to take on roles in the town and on different boards that had openings. And, you know, we thanked them. And as we've always said, you know, our volunteers are really what keeps this town moving forward and making it a great place to work, live, play, and learn. So we have a very substantial list here. I, do we want to go through these one at a time or? Yeah, let's do it to recognize people.
Yeah.
So we have Christopher G., who is joining the Affordable Housing Committee. I won't try to get back on for everyone, but he is extremely qualified for that position as most of these folks are. We have Justin LaFond, who is joining us on the Neighborhood Conservation District Commission. Justin is a young resident in North Anover who's moved into that, that neighborhood, so it's great to see them stepping forward. And then we have a couple of very qualified folks stepping up for the zoning board, which we currently have three openings for, but we're filling two with Steve Said and Mike List. And then we've got Patricia Riley, who's joining us on the Council of Age, on aging. And then Jenna Sideri, joining us on the Youth and Recreation Council. Jenna is a, an alumni of the youth center, have worked there for many years, so it's great that she's now coming back in a professional capacity. William Swiger to Stevens Estate Advisory Committee. William's an attorney who came in with some great ideas on how to conserve the property and, and prevent erosion. Derek Ward on the Sustainability Committee and Martha Wolfenden, who's a teacher in town, is, would love to join the Historical Commission. So I think we got a lot of great volunteers stepping up.
This is a great list.
Yeah.
So diverse, but really great people.
No, it's awesome. People are stepping up left and right. It's like, wow.
So I think we could take them all as a slate now that I've reviewed each one of them. That's okay.
I approve approval for the entire list.
Second?
All those in favor? Aye. Great, unanimous appointment.
Madam Chair, for the next item, I'm going to recuse myself since the applicant has the same last name as me.
Ah, very good.
I'm going to recuse myself for a few minutes.
I see Ashley, um, yes, in the audience, so let Ashley present her request for the town common.
You with buckle.
Hi.
So, as you know, I started the summer series. It feels like I was just in front of you for buckle for that. And now we're ending, which is crazy. It's been a really good summer. We've had a very successful run. I think all of our classes, Tuesdays and Thursdays range between fifty and seventy participants. And Saturday mornings, we have between twenty and thirty typically. So it's been really great. Um, we've also engaged a lot of the businesses in town, so we have like technical, what I'm calling sponsors. Sponsor meaning they come, they usually provide water, um, and then some kind of incentive to come to their, their place of business. So tomorrow we have Joe Fish sponsoring. They're giving like a ten dollar off in waters, which is really great. So August thirtieth is the last day of the summer series for fitness and I wanted to end that class at yoga and then immediately following yoga, have a little end of summer celebration for all the participants. I'm partnering with Chris Buko, couldn't be here tonight, of Macalones, and they're very generously helping me to do this. We're trying to keep this at zero cost for the participants, so more of a celebration, but there will be a suggested donation, entry fee of ten dollars, which all proceeds will go to either a fundraiser in town or an organization. We're still working out which that would be, so we're open to suggestions if you have them. But what the event looks like after yoga, we'll have a drink area set up and there is some local breweries who are interested in coming to send a tip-certified representative to serve beer and wine as well to everyone who's twenty-one plus that can go in. You'll have your ID checked. We have the perimeter fencing, six-foot buffer. There'll be an outer ring as well. Also looking to have a food item, preferably a food truck, so we're working on some of the licensing for that. I know you guys were talking about fees earlier. That was one of them I had a few questions on. There's one food truck that's interested. It's a barbecue food truck called Fat Bellies and they are willing to come and do this for free, which is amazing, but some of the licensing for them was a little bit steep, so I didn't know if there was, instead of the way that it's phrased, if there was like a temporary permit option to do the one day, that might be easier, but we can talk about that. Some other things I wanted to bring up though, besides IDs and the snow fencing setup. Macalones will also set up the one-day insurance, so the liability insurance will be all set. I've submitted the application, so the police and fire department know that this is happening. The fire department had a question about the food truck, so we can answer that when we get to it. We'll likely use the electricity at the stage, probably play music. And we'll have a dumpster brought to the site morning of, if that's okay, so we'll dispose of the trash ourselves. We'll have trash bags and all that. If we can use the trash bags on the common, that's easier. If we take the bags out, we're happy to do that, but if not, we can bring in our own barrels and porta-potties. We're gonna have those delivered the night, the day before and then picked up Friday morning, probably just a few, not, not many. Typically, I'm, I'm thinking it's going to be between seventy-five and a hundred people attending.
Wow, is your event ground?
I know, I know. It's been crazy.
You know, when we talked initially, I just want to make this point, just so people know that this is free, not sponsored by a business because we have had businesses who want to do this and it's just not a good practice for the town to be, you know, for profit to be hosting classes, because next thing you know, we've got music lessons, karate lessons, dance lessons, yoga, whatever, and it's.
Yeah.
But this is, this is really gone well for you. Good for you.
Yeah, thank you. I think it's, I think the community has really embraced it, which I think is, you know, half the battle. I'm a marketing professional, so to get the word out, it's not, you know, that, that difficult, I suppose, but, I mean, the Facebook page grew basically overnight. We're now at about five hundred followers and they're very active and I mean, every class, everyone's coming up and thanking the teachers and it's just a nice way to, you know, give the community something to do that's healthy, three times a week and every class has been very popular so far, which is really nice. Yeah, so it's been great. So I just wanted to do something to honor everybody at the end of the summer, do something fun, you know, after our last class, just to celebrate. It's been such a successful year and I'm excited. I hope we can do this again next year and just make it more of a traditional event for the town and grow it every year, I think would be, would be amazing.
I think the town's ready for a kind of, we have some traditions that have been longstanding and it's time to add, add to that a little bit. And I think you're, you're starting down that road, so.
I have a suggestion for a donation. The middle school fields, we are looking to raise lots of money and it ties into what you're doing.
Yep.
You know, good health recreation.
Yeah, that's a great one.
Big or small, we are looking for donations to get that project finished up.
That would be amazing. Yeah, that's a great suggestion.
But you choose what you want. It's a suggestion.
Yeah, it's hard to pick, you know, what.
You got my vote no matter what.
Yeah. But that's a good one. Thank you. Do you have any questions for me? So this was just more about, just for permission to do the event and then I'll come back and do more of like the one-day permit for the liquor on the twenty-seventh.
So the request is to use the town common for a celebration?
Yes.
With an anticipated seventy-five to a hundred people.
It's a little close.
Well, it's just a timing, right? So we're.
I know.
We're dealing with the timing.
I know, and I would have had all this submitted. It was just the insurance piece that was hanging me up.
Now you're gonna have to pay the rush fee.
We're gonna quantify this now.
I know, and I heard you talking about it. I was like, here I am, guilty.
So, I think I'd rather be on the elected side of this discussion. So just, I just want to make sure that when we get there, because, because a great part about government is a lot of things, but one of them is not rushing, right? We're not very good at rushing, so just be cautious of, of a few things associated with that. We have gotten feedback from Public Works and Fire about some of the conditions about those things in terms of fees. So the good news is if you're asking for a fee waiver, you're not doing it tonight because it's not on the agenda and therefore
Right.
you can't do it tonight because we can't add it to the agenda. But if you, that's something you're expecting for the next meeting, you may want to tee that up now because you're gonna, what date is the event?
The thirtieth.
And, and their next meeting is the twenty-seventh?
Twenty-seventh, yeah.
So getting a commitment from someone who says, yeah, if you waive the fees, they can't do that until the twenty-seventh, so you, so you may want to sort of tee some of those things up so you don't find yourself in sort of a complicated spot.
Okay.
But the fencing is one of those things identified. The fire department has some conditions around mobile food trucks. You know, I'm not the technician here, but I know that we already have that feedback, so we can give that feedback to you so you can make sure whoever you're dealing with handles that and gets the proper licenses. So if there are certain things you're gonna ask the board on the twenty-seventh, you may want to tee them up now because on the twenty-seventh, if it doesn't quite go the right way, it's really complicated to change that in three days.
Oh, yeah, yep. So I think with regards to liquor, I mean, that should, that's fine. I think the, the biggest thing that, the issue that, it's not really an issue, but the one thing we're just waiting on is the one-day liability insurance, so we should have that squared away earlier in the week. Middle of this week probably, so I can get all those permits going and in play. But, you know, I really was a little bit hazy on the food truck. I, I didn't know, you know, what, I know there's the hundred-dollar processing fee, but then there's the licensing fee to work within the town. So I didn't know what that looked like and then if it was, you know, while they, because they are donating all of this, if there was a possibility to not do that.
Doesn't it just say zero for food trucks?
Food trucks, we don't charge for food trucks.
It's a fifty dollars.
Well, there's the, there's food trucks and there's certain other things. So, so the health department inspects these vehicles. Maybe a fee associated with the inspection of some of those vehicles, so I, I just want to make sure that if there's, I can't speak to it specifically because I don't know what they're requesting. Normally when those vehicles come, they come to town hall, they get inspected in advance, so we know what's going on with the vehicles. I just, the timeline's a little tight here and I just want to make sure that you're aware of some of the limitations associated with that, so I'd just be careful.
Okay.
And, and boards waiving fees, if there are ones, if there are fees and the board waives them, and then you're talking about donations, gets us into this really funny statute called the ethics law, where they waive fees, but you collect donations and agree to put them on your spot.
Right, yeah, you're right, okay.
You know, the really crummy part about this sometimes, these regulatory pieces, if they sound like I'm really being mean, but we're not attempting to be mean. This is just some of the limits we find ourselves in, so just be cautious about some of that. So we're working with you. We'll give you this feedback.
Yep.
But the faster we can turn that around, the better off we are. And I think once we get past the first one this year, the rest of it will become, we'll put it on the agenda, it'll be simple as stuff, right?
Yep, agreed, yeah.
So, Mr. Town Manager, so just a question. So I've seen, I think this food truck did an event about a year ago.
Okay, same truck to me?
Yeah, um, when Lena opened up her, her business there in the old center. I think they were there. What, what is our process for if it's on private property?
Well, in private property is different, but it's still, if you're serving in the community, not unlike an ice cream truck, which may pull onto, say, that might be a little different with public property. Vehicles serving food have certain requirements in a community that they, especially if they're preparing food or, you know, fire department have requirements. Did you know if the, if the propane tank is larger than twenty pounds of propane, it must be secured, built into the facility. It can't be separate. So I just, I want to make sure that all those roles, make sure we're checking those boxes, but the health department traditionally inspects those vehicles. There's a requirement, they get a permit from the health inspector to make sure that they're preparing foods in a certain way and those kind of things. I, but I can't speak specifically to the food truck. I don't have that.
I just vaguely recall that they, they may have been here before and I just didn't know what the process was.
If it's been a year, they may need to be inspected again to make sure the vehicle.
I think they do need to be inspected again.
Yeah. So again, it may or may not be for you. I can't speak specifically to this because it's the first I'm hearing of this, so I'm a little unprepared for that. I just want to make sure that we.
What's the timeline for the health inspection?
It'll be up to the health inspector.
Okay.
So there's, you know, it's not uncommon for folks to roll up like one day before the event and say, geez, how come you can't inspect me today? So if you know it's coming, coming, and just want to make sure you touch base with the the health inspector, the health director, make sure you coordinate that, or they do that, so they do it in advance. Because typically things have, tends to be a little rushed.
Okay.
Yep. The timing can be fairly quick, but it depends on their schedule.
Right, right, okay.
So you're waiting for a liquor license liability?
Yes.
And everybody who's serving alcohol will be tip-certified because they're gonna ask that question in two weeks?
Yeah, correct, yes.
And you're gonna have sort of the construction fans and the typical perimeter, right?
And a table. Everyone will be ID'd walking in and all twenty-one plus will have a bright yellow wristband.
Okay, so all of that stuff will be presented. Anything else that we can think of that puts us in a spot where it gets complicated two weeks from now on a Monday?
I don't, yeah, I don't think so. I think it's fine for delivery for the dumpster and the porta-potties. That's fine.
We would not know that, but they would.
Yeah, Public Works has identified the fences they normally would. The fire department has identified a stick, you know, if they have a hood, if they're cooking food, then they need a sticker on the hood, the propane. Again, having me describe the individual requirements is a little rough, but I'll feed that information back to you now.
Okay.
Just stay in contact with our office to make sure that we know what's going on so we can make that twenty-seventh go a little smoother.
Do you have a rain date?
I, I don't. I mean, I went back and forth with that. I was thinking, I know, I was thinking the following Sunday, but it's Labor Day, so I think we just do rain or shine and maybe put up some pop-up tents. Is it?
Wear plastic.
Or people just bring a rain jacket or poncho.
Yeah, spring jacket, have fun.
Keep in mind that the electricity on the common is only in certain places, so I noticed that you said that there may be a need for electricity, so it's usually only on the points of the common, so the three points is where the electricity connection is.
I was thinking by the stage.
Yes.
That's electricity there, yeah.
There is, back behind the stage, there is a connection, correct.
So I was thinking, I mean, nothing crazy, just maybe just for some music, like a speaker. We do use it for Zumba on Tuesdays and they set up a speaker and play, so something similar. That's fine.
Okay.
We'll see you next time.
Yeah.
Questions for Ashley?
As they say, make it so.
You know someone close in your life that knows a lot of these licensing issues.
Yeah.
The person with the same last name, but it's not Buko.
Your motion?
I move that the board has selected to approve the request of Ms. Allenford and Chris Buko to use the town common on August thirtieth, 2018, from six to nine PM for end of the season celebration for the summer fitness series.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay, four, four to zero. Thank you, Ashley.
See you in two weeks.
Yep.
Okay, and next we have a request of Brian Fraser of North Anover CAM for a waiver of the building permit fee for Seventy Main Street. I saw Brian at one point. Tell us a bit about.
Just let him stay.
Oh, sorry, I forgot.
Good evening, guys. Thanks. As you know, we're, we're in the middle of getting ready to move and build a new location for the Community Access, Access Center here in town. It's been a lot, long road getting here, but we're, we're finally at the point where we've chosen a general contractor and we're, we're ready to start the ball rolling in the, at the new location at Seventy Main Street. So under the guidance of the, our board of directors, we wanted to see the opportunity if there was the ability to waive fees for the building permits. By doing that, seeing if there's an opportunity to allow us to use our funding more in line with its purposes, so whatever, whatever money we save in the permitting fees, we can more directly use for technology and, and the use of equipment and access to the residents here in town. Our sole purpose is providing services to the town and the residents and, and giving back to the community whenever we can. So we, we always try and return our funding directly to the businesses in town whenever possible, so that's why I'm here tonight.
And I agree with everything that you say. You're a great organization. You show up at every event, nights, weekends, and I think I would fully support the waiving of the fee. You are a town partner, so.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I'll make that a motion if you like.
Second?
Sure. Uh, any other discussion?
I think I echo that. Not every, I mean, we want to try to support as many nonprofits as possible, but it's true, the role that you play is very much almost a quasi-government.
Yeah.
Right, part of us.
Yeah, I mean, in fact, we.
Communication.
Put somebody on your board, right?
Yeah, exactly.
One appointment and.
Yep.
You're always thinking of ways that you can move the town and distribute information all over the town, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, fully agree.
It's a great, great partnership.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you for all your support and we look forward to getting the project underway for you guys. Thank you.
So you'll invite us to the open house when it's all done, right?
Absolutely. It'll be big. It's not like you're from a job. Thank you all. Thank you very much.
Great job. Thank you.
Um, now we have our town clerk, Mrs. Bradshaw, again to give us an update on the election.
Okay, thank you so much, Madam Chairman, members of the board, for just indulging me to give an update for the state primary election, which will be September fourth, which is the day after Labor Day, so we are faced with some different logistical challenges. Just trying to get everything set up on the Friday before to be ready to open the polls at seven AM on the fourth, which is the first day of school as well, so. We'll be working with school officials and the police to try to get through the early, early process of traffic and that. Which brings us to the fact of some deadlines that are coming up this week. Wednesday, my office will be open till five PM. It's a, I'm sorry, try eight PM for that one, because it's the last day to register to vote or change your party affiliation for this election. I'm also there and happy to accommodate anybody that might need an absentee ballot. You know, being open till eight o'clock if somebody can't come during the day, happy to do that. There's no early voting for this election, but anybody can vote absentee. That also brings us to the point of the last day to be able to vote with an absentee ballot is five PM on the Friday, which is the Friday before Labor Day. So I will be open till five o'clock. I and every other city and town clerk's office will be open till five as the last day to vote absentee for the Tuesday election. Just to point out that our, we have nine different ballots for this election, depending on, it's broken down by precinct. So one to four has one ballot, precinct five has a ballot, and six to eight have their own ballots. And we have a Democratic ballot, a Republican ballot, and a Libertarian ballot. All of them are available not only on our website, but we, the IT Department, Chris McClure, and our social media intern have been great about putting a link right on our website about the September fourth election. You can actually go on there and just click on, right from the website, takes you to the Secretary of State's page. It tells you whether you're a registered voter, it gives you what precinct you're in, and then you can actually view the ballot that you're going to have to choose from. It's very complicated because of the fact of, you know, people are used to getting one kind of ballot and the choice that you make for, and if you're enrolled in a party, you have to take that ballot. So if I'm a registered Democrat, that's the only choice I have. If I'm unenrolled, I can pick from any one of those three different party ballots. Or if I'm in a political designation, I can also choose any one of the ballots. That's something that's relatively new for people being in a political designation. We had originally hoped we might be able to use poll pads, which we have coming, but it was not recommended by the Elections Division because of cybersecurity issues, because they have not been approved. they have not been approved for use in actual elections yet, so we're hoping that that will be forthcoming. Would love to see it for November, where we have early voting, we can use the poll pads, but would also love to be able to see, to use the poll pads to check people in and out on elections, but that's waiting approval from them. And the website is a great resource, people can just go to that, or give us a call if you need an absentee ballot, or students away at school, if they're going to be away at school, there's still plenty of time for us to be able to get them ballots. They can just either fill out the form that's on the website, or just call us, or send us any kind of written communication. So if they just write a little note, like an absentee ballot sent to this location, this is my home address, and sign it, and email it to us, that's all we need legally to be able to help them out. And just as a note for the students, 16 and 17-year-olds who are not yet 18 years of age can register to, pre-register to vote, it was very successful at the high school, we did over 100 students, and when you turn, when the person turns 18 years old, they automatically become a registered voter. So it's a very good thing to do, to pre-register. We're just excited about it, because we get them when they, when we do our certification queue every day, and there were three today of young people that had done the pre-registration process to register to vote, so they automatically go into the system, they'll get an acknowledgement notice, so it's a very exciting thing to do. Or if they go to the Registry of Motor Vehicles, they can also, when they get their driver's license at 16 or 16 and a half, they can indicate that they want to register to vote, even though they're not 18, they go into the process, so that's working quite well. You have any other questions, or?
Yeah, there's a question, so, were these dates set up by stature, or, not stature, statute, but it's just so kind of confusing and inconvenient, and your last day is the Friday, which is, it's just really-
The Tuesday election day has driven most people to have to be able to do things differently. We normally set up at the high school the day before, so you have cost considerations in most cities and towns, you don't want to be setting up on Labor Day at three times or four times what the normal cost of setup would be. We have had election day changes to Thursday before, and then we set up on a Wednesday, and you do your absentee voting, but most, a lot of town halls, hours closes at noon, but many town halls are not open at all on a Friday. And we'll have to, you know, we'll have to change the hours, you know, to open up, and that's caused by the, and people with children trying to get them ready for the first day of school, and things like that, it's, would not have been our first choice for the, to have a Tuesday.
But we don't get to choose, this is state law.
State law.
But the Secretary of State, did he have options, or?
We certainly gave input that we would have preferred to see even August, you know, the last week of August would have been great, schools not in session, so everybody would have, you know, easy access. Unfortunately, our concerns weren't, I don't want to say-
So it wasn't necessarily the first Tuesday in September?
Well, they have to change the date, it's usually somewhere around the 18th of September, there's holiday reasons, but it's also more involved with, if you end, if you had a recount in the primary election, you have federal law that governs when you have to send out overseas ballots for the November election. That's what triggers the change of date to an earlier time in September.
So when are the absentee ballots available?
We have them available now, so if anybody wants to come in in person and vote in town hall, or just give us a call, and we send them right out the same day. You have plenty of time to get them back, they have to be back by 8:00 p.m. on election day.
I've been surprised, Joyce, by how many people I've spoken to, including peers in local government, whose names have been on the ballot, who didn't realize that they could physically go to town hall and vote absentee.
Yes.
And so, you always have conversations with parents about kids going away to college, and make sure they mail in their information now to get the ballot, but in theory, they've not left yet, and most students actually haven't left.
They can actually come in, we've had a fair number of college students going away to school, and they stop in, and are glad, and sometimes this is the very first time they've been voting, so it's an opportunity to sort of explain the election process to them, too. We have copies of all the ballots available, sometimes they want to take them home and study them, I mean, we have them posted, but it's a very, a lot of them didn't realize what the primary election process is, and how important it is to candidates. Some of them, you don't make it out of the primary, you're not on that ballot in November, so they're all working extremely hard to get the word out to be able to be successful in the primary election. Because you look at some of the ballots, and there's big blank spaces on some of them, because there, nobody has taken out the, taken out papers to go on the November ballot.
One last question, I know you have to renew for your absentee ballot, is that due at this election, or if they did it in the most recent past?
You just have to, if you normally get them, you have to apply. You can apply for all the elections, or if for some reason you haven't done it yet, simple phone call, or fax, or an email to us, we're happy to, we're happy to do that, because the absentee ballot request is only good for one year.
That's what, that was my question.
Calendar year, so.
So, we're open until 8:00 p.m. on Wednesday, this is the latest night we're open.
8:00 p.m. on Wednesday, so if that's a good time, that's the last time to register to vote or change party affiliation, but I am happy, we have the ballots right there, so if that's a convenient time for the public to come in, and they'd like to absentee vote, happy to do that.
Could we send a notice out through our online service, reminding voters at the later time? I know that you've done a good job working on it.
News and notices, put them up.
How about the 8:00 p.m.?
It's-
Yeah, there'll be some, is there something else through news and notices, have we done that?
It's been on the website, and they've sent it out through social media, too. But we can-
You're planning on a robocall?
I wasn't, but I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, it's so unusual this year, and so confusing, and so time-sensitive, when it's the Friday before Labor Day.
Correct.
You know, it's, it's a little crazy, that's why I was wondering, but as my fellow board members said, there's other holidays, so it made that September difficult, but I don't know.
I mean, I would certainly like to see an announcement go out, because most people have no idea.
Yeah.
Whatever you suggest, we're happy to.
We'll normally put it through the news and notices, which for us means that it hits all the people that subscribe, about 800 people, hits our social media folks, which is typically, depending on how you look at it, 4,000 to 5,000, and then hits the website automatically through doing that. But certainly, we can do a robocall as we approach the weekend leading into it, so folks are prepared for it, because if they come back Monday, they're going to be, you know, from a holiday weekend, they may not quite be focused on those things.
Right, we could also do the call that we normally make the day before the election, do that in preparation for the Friday opening, would probably be a good time to do it, like that Wednesday or Thursday, and just remind people that if they're going to the polls to come on Tuesday. Because calling people on a Monday to remind them of the election in the morning on Labor Day, when they're trying to get everything all prepared, might be-
And I call reminding people about the absentee opportunity, because of the lack of information out there, and it's not your fault, it's just a misunderstanding, where people, I think, conflate the two, where they conflate the two between early voting, and there's not, this is not an early voting election. So if you're not here on the second, it's not like you can, I mean, you need to be aware that you can show up prior, even though there's no early voting, if you know you won't be around. And because it's the day after Labor Day, anyone who commits to Boston knows that they're probably going to be in Boston.
We'll just bundle a message, it's, what you don't want to do is a one-off message, one-off message, because folks are focused.
Right, right.
Some kind of bundled message that deals with the absentees, and deals with the general schedule, so folks are starting to think about it, and then Joyce does a fantastic job of sending that notice out, you know, time for the actual election, so.
Right.
So could I, just two quick ideas on those lines. One is, we were just talking to Brian Fraser, is there any way that they could do like a scroll, or an ad, or something, that they can, they-
Yeah, you have to send it in.
Yeah, he usually does, but we'll make sure that he has all that information out there on cam, right.
It'll automatically be on the government channel, and then from that, that's automatically picked up for Cam when they're not broadcasting another live program. All that stuff is done as a matter of course. I think what's different here is the timing.
Timing. The timing in that it's, it's different than what people are used to, and it's also the mindset, you know, you look at the fact you can over-stimulate people with information, but you want to have, make it available for them. But we'll make certain that Brian has all the, has the deadlines posted, and also the reminder, especially the Friday afternoon.
What about the, because it impacts the first day of school, what about also something on the North Enover School website?
Drop your kid up and drop off your ballot?
Yeah, well, you know, I know we're trying to keep that separate, but because it's sort of intertwined with the first day-
I just want to be cautious about what looking, looks like we're invested in an election.
I know.
We have an information piece, we give it to every resident in the same sort of method, we feed them the information in the same ways we historically do it. We just do it in this case, the timing is different, and the notice is a little different. But I want to be careful not to look like we're focusing on this group versus another, because it's just going to be very cautious. So, I think if we put it out through the normal channels, we reach a lot of people, and we'll do that through, it always happens on cam and our own notices, and put out a robocall with the right timing to make people aware of it, I think that will be adequate.
Okay.
Yep.
And we put out the message boards, too, go out and-
Right, we have the police message boards, too, and the social media intern's been fantastic of getting things out into places that we normally don't have them. And that's where, we've seen a terrific response from people, who say, we heard about it, and, you know, that's why we're here, so that's a help, and the more we can do with that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on to our agenda, we have nothing under older new business, so we can move to Town Manager's Report.
For Cam, Madam Chairman, in addition to any questions you may have about the individual reports attached, I want to touch base with two different things. One is an update of where the planning board stands relative to the master plan, because in addition to what's on the website, I know that, you folks have been paying attention to this, and I'm sure the public is, would like to know as well, and the processes are moving forward. So, if I can, the planning board is going through about two to three chapters per meeting of the material they have in the draft. The draft product is on the website, everybody has access to the draft product, it's over 200 pages, so you have an opportunity to certainly look at that, whether it's the board or any residents, and provide feedback, but they're making their way through that draft. They've had two public hearings, they'll have one more on August 21st, that should be, they're getting closer to wrapping that up in terms of the public hearing. Public hearing process through the planning board is the opportunity residents have to come and comment on the master plan. So as I know, this board remembers, under the statute, the master plan is a responsibility of the planning board. Ultimately, the planning board will come back to you with a largely completed document, and give you an opportunity for a sort of last bite at the apple, which I think is great, but the planning board ultimately needs to adopt the document under the statute, and they're doing that. And so I'd recommend, if anybody has any feedback or comments, they, not this board, but residents, to go to the planning board meetings. After that meeting, they aim to produce a final draft for the board of selectmen review, and probably will release that to the board of selectmen on August 27th, and so we'll give you a copy of that version, so that any updates. And then we'll work, give it to that board, so that you guys can sort of evaluate it and develop a little of feedback, and I think bring it to this board, and this will be up to the chair, but I assume have some kind of discussion, maybe at the September 10th meeting, about any individual feedback you have to the master plan, so that that can go back to the planning board and be incorporated for the final product, I think it's a general term. So they're moving along, we're getting very, very close to a completed master plan process, that's 30 years in the making, it's a pretty dynamic document, it's fantastic, so we're getting much closer to that.
Okay.
That's what I have, I know that there's been, sorry, go ahead.
So the, so the planning board, as you've tried, so their component of this, or their responsibility for this, is producing this document, is that?
Yes.
Right. So, at that point, we've got this document, all this work done, and it's up to us, as the board of selectmen then, to do, I mean, what, what happens with that document, right?
So, everything and nothing, if that makes any sense.
Yeah, exactly.
So, which is probably, the latter is probably the most common process, right? What I've said from the beginning to the board is the statutory responsibility for master planning is the planning board. There is no, although there's a recommendation in the statute, it happens every 10 or so years, most communities do it every 20 years. In some cases, we've gone closer to the 30-year period, I think on 2020 will be a 30. The failure, I think, of most master plans is not the investment of residents and others to develop a plan, it's the plan gets developed, and then we stop talking about it for the next 20 years. And so what I've encouraged the board to do, and you folks have been great in sort of embracing the idea, is we need a way to implement the features of the plan, or as many as is practical, right? There's no way, even though this is a roadmap, it's not practical to imagine with all of the information in that plan, you're going to be able to develop this master checklist, which I think you should develop, and get through all of it, it's just not logical. But, we shouldn't be passive in the process of implementing what the community has said it wants for the future. We should, it seemed to me that you folks as the policymakers, and me as the person responsible for implementing that policy, should be active in a way to deliver on that plan, and it would seem the way, the best way to do that would be develop some kind of implementation committee, leave it up to you and the planning board to figure out what the best sort of way to do that is. In the end, then, implementation committee will start creating that checklist, and start creating that path of implementing the individual features, that'll automatically sort of integrate with my office, because it'll need to be funded, right, and we'll need to track it, and so from that perspective, how we can fit it into the capital plan, how those items get fit into the budget, are all sort of the operational side that I know that will eventually sort of cross into my office. So, it would seem to me that the master plan shouldn't just be $150,000 investment to check a statutory box for something we know we should do, it should be more. And the closer we can get over the next 20 years, some of us won't be here for the whole 20, but the closer we can get over the next 20 years to making the community look like what the community told us it wants to look like, that'll mark, I think, our success, right? And so I think there's an opportunity.
So, a point that I was going to make to further on that, in my selectman comment time, I have had a chance to chat a bit with the chairman of the planning board, Anton Goldberg, about the idea of a master plan implementation committee, and we've discussed a bit about our thoughts, at least, as to what it would, what it could look like, how we would appoint it, and exactly what our town managers outlined in terms of their responsibilities, is I think what we were thinking. So I was anticipating that we would have that as a discussion item as a board, and a thing to vote on, the creation of such a committee, you know, at a subsequent meeting at the time that we adopt the master plan. So I don't really want to put the cart before the horse and put something like that on our agenda yet, but I was thinking of that in the September timeframe.
Sounds really important, sounds like a good undertaking for us to do.
So.
Yeah, I think it makes sense, it's, you know, while it's hot off the press, we've got some, you know, I think it's, it just gives us a little time to think about it, because we've seen the draft, so we've got some ideas as kind of where the direction could be, which could help us think about the structure, and maybe, you know, possible candidates for, because I think those are kind of the two components, what, who's on it, and how does it operate? Because that's what you're really talking about, is really creating.
Yeah, I mean, my thinking is the, those, not to get too far down the discussion of what the committee would look like, because I think we should have a separate discussion on that topic, but I guess I'll, one final comment is, I wasn't thinking, that this committee wouldn't be responsible for implementing anything, they would sort of be an oversight committee to make sure all the different groups that would have to implement something kind of are doing it, or thinking about it, or have it in their plan, right? So, one thing might be to change the zoning, well then that's the planning board to come up with what the zoning would be, to address a certain recommendation in the plan. Another thing might be something that, you know, a different group like Farnett might do, if it's trails related, so then this committee would kind of go to them and have some discussion, whatever, so anyway, we can talk more about it.
I think it's good, I mean, one thing we've shown over the last few years is that we can implement the plan. You know, we had the capital plan, the building plan, and by having the plan and working the two-year cycle with that, we've, you know, we've proven that we can work the plan, and I think, you know, rather than just have to sit on a shelf and get the dust over the this sit on a shelf and gather dust over the next 20 years, I think it's important that we address it, like Chris said, that all the iron is hot, and start looking into how we can, you know, get some of those low hanging fruit and, and work through this plan. I think that's a, you know, I think that's something that we all want to leave with having done.
Well, I think credit goes particularly to the town manager and our financial staff to have the money plan work. That's the big piece of it, is having that puzzle of the money, you know, fitting in for the different projects with our needs, and to your credit.
Appreciate it. Well, so it's something to think about. This is partly strategic and part marketing. So you have a 200-page document, and is, not unlike the 45-page document about electric power outages, however well it's written, it's difficult to get from the beginning to the end. The master plan will suffer from some of the same challenges. So one of the things I would encourage you to do, and I've started to encourage the consultant and Mr. Kefory's staff and the planning board, is to start thinking of symbols and representations for each of the categories of the plan, so that when you see the symbol, whether that's a graphical sort of symbol of a trail-
Looks like a school.
Looks like a school, looks like open space, looks like a public building, looks like this, and integrating those symbols into the plan, and then integrating the same symbols into other things we do. So in the capital plan, if we're talking about facilities, you see the same kind of symbol at the top of that request from that department. And reinforcing those kinds of representations, so that if you have eight categories, seven categories in the master plan, you have a graphical representation for each of the seven categories. When those items appear in the capital plan, the same graphical representation appears. And they appear in the budget, the same graphical representation of plans. When they, when they're a project that's succeeding, that we're communicating out through social media, we show the same symbol. And we start to reinforce with the public the connection between those symbols and the master plan, because technically, everything should funnel through the master plan.
Yes.
That's why I think they call it a master plan. So that makes sense, right? We didn't have to make up a name. So that's a little bit of a challenge.
I like that too. I would take-
Like affordable housing, could be enrolled houses or something like that.
One step further, I'm thinking of, just because we're in the Ask the Manager section in the reports, and we've talked about the idea of moving reporting to sort of goals-based reporting, and I'm assuming a lot of these goals that the departments are going to have are also going to be tied to master plan.
Yes.
And implementing pieces of master plan, so that will be-
Makes perfect sense. So if you're doing budgeting and you're implementing a goal within a budget, it doesn't make any sense for the goal within the budget not to be connected to something that was approved as a master plan, because if the master plan item is going this way, and the budget's going this way, you're not going to implement, so finding some way under the umbrella of the master plan to integrate everything we do is the goal, and the way to do that, in my opinion, my humble opinion as a former finance guy, and not as someone who's necessarily into the sort of marketing end of things, is to create a graphical representation, because that symbol is something that will resonate. If we talk about finance one day, and dollars another day, and cost another day, we lose that in the terms. But the symbol, the graphical symbol, sticks with people, and we can put that in everything we do.
I say we get Ashley on it, because she did one great job of marketing.
Andrew, have you thought, then, so there's the implementation piece where we as community volunteers and officials have to chase, as we should, chase the goals of that plan. But there are so many pieces in the plan, and I know that it's still a draft form, but the eventual piece is going to have a lot that town staff and departments need to chase. So do you have a plan for internally, how the staff, I mean, I mean, that's not going, I think it's, it's important, like, we're not going to be asking a volunteer committee to be diving into the management of town halls. So how do you see that playing out?
Yeah.
Next to the symbol will have a picture of the face of the staff.
People will want that. Again, this is my humble opinion, but yes. So my thought is that when you finish this document, the next logical step is to develop what I envision is an appendix of sorts, which is a chart that identifies each and of, each and every one of the deliverables identified in the report. So the report is really a narrative, it's a nice read, but taking everything in the 200 pages and refining it into a fairly long deliverables list, here are all of the things in the master plan. We're not going to get to them all, right, but we have a list. And then the committee working with staff, prioritizing those deliverables, and coming back to you, because I view you as the ultimate implementation committee, you're the chief policy board in town, you taking that sort of list, coming, that committee comes back and says, hey, we've met with staff and, and other stakeholders, and we think that laundry list of items is this, here is the order in which we would do them. And they come back to you as the board, and you set those priorities. Once you set those priorities, they become part of our strategic budget process, they become part of our budget process, part of our goal process and capital improvement plan. And inherently, whoever department would be responsible for those would be the people responsible for delivering on those goals. And part of the feedback you'll hear from me is, hey, it's really great you undertook this goal, but that's a really heavy lift, and that's either a multiple-year effort, or we, here's a timeline I think we can get that done in, and you may decide, given the timeline, you'll go to something else. So in the end, we will be limited by the human resources that we have, but I think that'll be part of the overall discussion, to take that master list and start to put them in. So again, I envision that you take your master list, and you're going to start, in addition to a symbol, housing, here's the project, increase affordable housing by 5%, deliverable date, here's a deliverable date, you'll know who the stakeholders are, when do you plan on delivering that? It'll be five years, right? And, and that's what you're trying to develop, and then it gets integrated. And part of the equation is, my feedback to you of what we can get done in a practical way, right? Some of the things will be easier than others. And so it'll be, that'll be the feedback I'll give you as part of this process. So I see this committee taking, really taking the report and starting to create that deliverable list, and coming back to you and saying, here's how I would order those, and then me weighing into whether or not, what we can pull off in terms of timing. Does that help answer the question?
Yeah. I mean, I get, this sounds like a lame response, but it's exciting, because we're not just talking about implementing a plan, but we're actually talking about implementing a cultural change, right?
Yes.
Because we keep talking about looking at a plan and saying, well, it's more like 20 years down the road. But if we as a culture, as a town, constantly refer to that plan, then when it comes time to redo it, whether it's within 10 years or whether it's 20 years, we're just going to, we're not going to ever fall off the bike ideally, right, if we put the right procedures in place here. And so that's, I didn't expect you to have the whole plan and give us the play-by-play of how you implement it.
Oh, we think about it.
But it's exciting internally and externally, right, with both community members and staff, that they just all think of the plan in that same way.
Yep. We want to institutionalize the concept of ongoing planning. So we've done it, right, we've done it on an individual basis. Mr. Valencourt's identified some of the successes. I think we're six, more successful than most. This is the biggest challenge we will take on. This is the idea of fundamentally changing how we operate, how you operate, how the community operates, to assume we're going to always be implementing a plan, and that that plan itself is a living plan, and will constantly be refined based on the inputs we're getting about, from feedback. So the committee's first challenge is develop this long list, right, from the individual plan, and start to implement. And then the committee's challenge is to get the feedback from the community and say, hey, by the way, see item number 12A? 12A is just no longer practical. And coming back to you and saying, we'd like to say 12A is no longer practical. So the committee is helping you, in addition to staff, get that kind of ongoing feedback. So we develop a plan, we review the plan, we implement the plan, we get feedback from the plan, we go back to the beginning, start again with the plan.
That's particularly important, because that's the one thing it's almost contrary to. You set up a plan, is you still need to have that flexibility when something-
Yes.
-changes, because something will happen economically, physically, that we hadn't anticipated.
There's a lot of variables up there, so yeah.
That, so having that piece in there is going to be, I think, really important right from the start, that it's a plan.
Yeah.
But, or yes, and. The other thing is, something that I think maybe as, as a board, we have to think about, you know, we're interviewing or putting people on all these different committees that are volunteer, and what do we say to them all the time? You're supporting these town departments. So I think we as a board have to think about how we help all these committees sync up with this too, because that's a little, they're not as connected, and now there's a real opportunity for them to connect, but a real necessity, actually, because we want that expertise channeled in the same way, just the way you're channeling your staff, right?
Definitely. I mean, I feel like every conversation unless we had with people on the appointment subcommittee was, oh, that's really relevant to what's going on in the master plan, make sure you're talking to that group. I mean, this conversation has just made me kind of think, we really need to think about what the composition of that committee is, and whether it's one committee or multiple committees, because it's going to be a really huge ask if they're really overseeing. I mean, this is going to be a very long list of items, and for a long period of time, in a lot of diverse areas. I mean, you know, affordable housing is very different than open space preservation, or whatever, you know, the, the areas are quite disparate, you know what I mean? Like, for one group of people to really oversee the implementation of all of that is-
That's a good, that's a good point.
A lot. So, something for us to think about.
So if you view the implementation as being the entire town, right, I know that's a little unfair, but if, but it's a, but that's the, the sort of-
Right.
-construct, right? Then the committee itself is, is, I was about to insert the word just, it's not just, but it is the group of folks who take the first pass of taking that document in our, right, and then getting the feedback, because ultimately you've got a sort of decision on that priorities. But you may want to think of a group, first of all, it, you know, there's a lot to do there, right? It's true. And you may want to think of a group that represents a broad number of the individual gooey symbols, you know, symbols that we want to create, right? You're going to need a housing person, you're going to need-
Yeah, right, exactly.
You're going to need those kind of folks, because someone's going to have to trust that that person knows housing, as an example, or that person knows something else. But yeah, we're trying to systematically change the way we view planning to integrate it into what we do every day. And it's unusual. I, I'm not aware of a lot of towns who have living, breathing master planning documents, but it would seem to me that's the point, right? That we shouldn't be making decisions one off at a time. It should be part of a broader composition.
Awesome.
Okay, yeah.
It's a goal.
Okay, any, any other things for, for Tom Manager?
Light topics like that, any other light topics?
Right, yeah. Any, so I think the closing thing is selectmen comments and updates. Tiffany?
Um, I did go, was it last Friday or the Friday before? I did go to, it's, it's the wall. It's the, is it honor wall?
The Vietnam War.
Yes, thank you.
Wilmington.
In Wilmington, and it was really a lovely ceremony. And we did honor our Vietnam veterans that were lost during that long and tragic war. And it was quite a moving experience. The way, it was a small version, but it's still massive. I mean, I know you guys saw it. And it was a really nice, it was a really nice ceremony. Our VSO officer was there, and it was a great night and quite moving, so. And I was not able to make it to, due to a family obligation, the National Night Out, but I heard it was great. I'm sure if you people went.
I actually wasn't able to go either, but I did hear it was awesome.
Yeah.
I went, it was great. No, it was. It was, again, kudos to the police and the fire for putting it on and, and getting everyone together, and all of the vendors and all of the departments that showed up to showcase their, their products and their, and the work that they do. And it's always just a great town event. It was hot that night, but there was still a lot of folks that showed up. The police and fire were, hot dogs and hamburgers, and they had plenty of water available, and they had the, the dog demonstrations, the, the police dog demonstrations. So it was really, it was a very nice night. And I think, again, kudos to those groups for doing a fantastic job putting this all together. And I know the merchants are involved in it in one way or another, but it's really, it's a great event, and I think it's always something that the community will choose.
Good.
Awesome.
Any other comments?
Any other comments, Charles?
I have one last thing. We finally, finally, finally got our Boston Post cane in and engraved. So with, having said that, we will be putting out a, with the help of our town clerk and the senior center, and of course, it's being donated by the North Endover Women's Club, we will be looking for our oldest living resident in the town of North Andover to, and we're also looking for the original post cane, if somebody has it in their attic. So we'll try to get some press so you all know what to look for. But it should be a lot of fun. And again, like I said, we're working with Madam Clerk and the senior center, and it should be a really fun presentation. So if you have a senior citizen in your family that you think might be eligible, and then we'll compare it to the clerk's records.
So can you explain that more, so we give-
It is, yeah. I should have, because it's, a lot of people don't know what it, it is. The Boston Post cane was distributed in the early 1900s for, it's sort of a promotion thing with the Boston Post newspaper and the Boston Post magazine. And they distributed to towns, not cities, throughout most of New England. And it's this wonderful head on the cane, the original canes were made out of ebony, and on it said, this is to be given to the eldest citizen in the town of North Andover. Originally, they were just given to men, but now, we, we lost ours, probably in about, from the research that I did, probably around the 1960s. Andover has their original, a lot of, it's probably about 70% of the towns have their original. So what the North Andover Women's Club did, we, we purchased replicas, we recently had them engraved, which was difficult because of the shape, it's really hard to get the engraving. And we, we purchased two. So what we are, our plan is that anybody who turns in the original, they find it in their attic, or they see it and think, I didn't know we were supposed to turn this back to the town, that whoever finds it and turns it in, we will give them as a gift, one of the replicas, to keep. So, but the purpose is to have two, one to be kept on display, and one to be given out in pictures, and it will really be a lot of, I think, a lot of fun. So just got it in last week, so we're really looking forward, so probably the end of summer, as I said, we'll be working with the clerk to set the parameters. Will it, will we be giving it to the actual oldest person in town, who might have just moved to town because of our facilities and, you know, our nursing care facilities, or will we try to say, well, we feel as though it should be someone who's been in the town a bit of a time, and those who maybe are new to the town, we would maybe work with them to see if they could be eligible in the community of which they came. So we're kind of working on all of that, so, but it should be fun. So.
All right, cool.
Well, I'm good?
No.
Thank you.
Okay.
The Artisan Market is this weekend, so come on down to the Mills to check out 50-plus vendors, because the last one was running out. So Sally Finnemore has twice as many vendors, including child crafters and vendors from North Andover families. We're going to be setting up from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Mills site on High Street.
When's the artisan one? When's the, the September artisan?
No, it's this, this Sunday, this Sunday, August 19th.
It's the August one, and then you have one, one in September?
We do.
Because we're supposed to be, the club is going to be doing that, so.
So, and the neat thing about the Artisan Market, yes, is that they partner with a different nonprofit each month that they have. The nonprofit supplies members to help vendors unload, and then as a gift, the Artisan Market makes a donation to that nonprofit. So, helping each other.
Awesome. All right, and I just have two things to share. One is, in the spirit of continuing having committees come to present to us, I just wanted to give you guys a heads-up that the Old Center District Commission will be coming to our meeting in September, September 24th, and the Cultural Council will be coming to give us an update on August 27th. I guess this is pending them having any issues, but those are the scheduled dates coming up. And relevant to the Old Center District Commission, I didn't know if people were aware that the, there's a Old Center District Zoning Review Committee that's in place, that's looking at the zoning of Old Center and seeing if there's any changes they would recommend. And their next meeting is Thursday, August 30th, so I just thought I'd mention that since that's something I wasn't sure people were aware was happening, and it's worth mentioning to the public. That's all I have.
Go to that meeting and then walk across the street to the yoga.
There you go, exactly.
That's a doubleheader.
Yeah, yoga and beer. There you go. You could really tie up like a pretzel.
Can I offer a motion to adjourn?
Please do. Can I hear a second? All in favor?
Hi.
All right.